That'd be good for him.
They said, they said 10,000 runners though, for the Boulderthon.
Holy moly.
Yeah. And I'm like, if I felt crowded with 2,500 runners, what would I feel like with 10,000?
The one down in Texas where they, it's like.
You'd be lost. You'd be just like.
They said it is the number, it is the number five half marathon in the entire United States. Which is kind of crazy, when you think about that, like in the middle of Colorado. But I mean, Colorado's cool, but still. I know, I thought it was kind of crazy. It definitely made me double take my idea on registering for that. It's like, hmm, I don't know about that one. Might have to rethink that.
Did they start you in waves according to your time, or?
Yeah, they did. But you know, people that think that they have a certain time and then, you know, maybe it's like their first one and they've been training, but they haven't actually done it. They don't always know their time. So then they all like crouch together and then trying to get away from them.
Yeah, they had the Pacers when we did that one.
They had, they had some Pacers with this one too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They did a good job.
It is Tuesday, April 15th. This is regularly scheduled meeting. It is 1 o'clock. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Just be noted that Commissioner Ortiz will not be in attendance today. It is now time for the pledge of allegiance and flag and vocation. Commissioner Langgraf has that duty today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you have given us. I ask that you grant your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. Lord, I ask that you be with, watch over, and protect Garden City, especially our first responders. Dear Lord, I also ask that you watch over everyone who is traveling this weekend over Easter and allow them to have safe travel. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Item four is the approval of the minutes. Any changes on the minutes? I didn't see anything at this time. Be approved as presented then. Item five is public comment. This is the time where we set aside time for anyone to come forward and speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and when you do come forward, please state your name for the record. Yes, sir?
Guess I'm the only one. They hit the head from pretty point. I just want to say a huge thank you. I try to be joyful in everything that we've got going on. And I just want to say thanks for all that they're doing, the street department, the cleanup that's happened and all those things that have gone on recently, as well as we have received our checks from the AFAC grant, and so I want to say thanks to the commission for that. It's been a huge blessing with our CR program, as well as some other things going on with Minister Alliance. So I just want to say thanks for that. Also, want to make sure you are invited to our National Day of Prayer, which is coming up on May 1st. It'll be noon at the park, at Stevens Park. And we're also doing this year a 5:30 time prayer, so I want to make sure everybody is aware of that as well. And then an additional thing is the community baccalaureate. We'd love to have you all present if you'd like at the high school. Getting started again after about nine years of not having that. And so that's happening at the, we think at this point at the high school, waiting on how many people want to come. It'll be the 11th at 3:00 PM of May. And then Community Culture Day on May 24th, from 11 to 2 in Stevens Park as well. Especially with the way the community is, the culture is right now, we're trying to overcome some of those obstacles and calm some fears. And so we're looking forward to a great time. If that's a new sponsors, and appreciate all that. So I just want to share with you all, thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not on the agenda? All right, moving on to 6A.
Item 6A, Commissioners Matt and Michelle Steele asked to present to the city of Garden City a Just Serve City Award and certificate. And I don't think the Steels were going to be able to make it, but Mr. Bingham's here, and so I'll have him come forward.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Well, thank you for this opportunity, Mayor and Commissioners. Just Serve, the organization believes in spreading hope, goodness, and unity throughout the vital role of volunteerism. With motivated individuals and communities, we can build united and harmonious societies. The Just Serve City Award is an award given, and only two in the city, or the state of Kansas, have received this award. It is an award designed to recognize and honor cities that demonstrate an exceptional commitment to volunteering and have made a significant impact in their community through these efforts in conjunction with the Just Serve Volunteer Platform, which links individuals from every walk of life with local service projects. Just Serve has been involved in community and citywide projects since 2016. Through, though, through motivated leaders in our city willing to partner with and become involved in the Just Serve program, we have worked together to clean and beautify, lift and support efforts to improve Garden City and surrounding communities. We are proud and excited to recognize and award Garden City as a Just Serve city and look forward to becoming involved in projects to lift and to beautify our Garden City. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Tell you what, if we want to get the commissioners to get a picture? Well, I have you standing in the center here. Get everybody else around.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of April 15th through 22nd, 2025 as Garden City High School Girls Wrestling Championship Week.
Dear, our motion to approve the proclamation is presented?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I will read the proclamation here and then get a picture with the group. Proclamation reads, whereas the Garden City High School Buffalo Girls Wrestling Team won the Kansas State Wrestling 6A Championship. This is the 12th wrestling championship win in the Garden City High School history and first for the girls' program. And whereas Crystal Laura is the 125-pound class, earned the title of 2025 State Champion. And whereas Maya Tarbit in the 130-pound class earned the title of 2025 State Champion. And whereas the 2025 State Champions of Class 6A for the 2025 consisted of, at 100, Nicole, um, Abr- Abrigo. Thank you. Third place, 105, Kiera Costa, third place, 110-pound MJ Mares, second place, 115, Maria Laura, second place, 125, Crystal Laura. Champion, 130, Maya Tarbit, champion, 135, Alexia Serrano, fifth place, 140, Maggie Guzman. Fourth place, 155, Olivia Dunlap, 170, Mary Condo, and 235, Maribel Hernandez. And whereas Garden City High School team also includes a dedicated staff of head coach Paul Lappin, coaches Kevin Perez, Anthony Calderon, Tylee Bier, Eli Copeland, Joe Bach, Angelina Serrano, and Jesse Nunez. And whereas head coach Paul Lappin received the 2025 6A Coach of the Year Award for Girls Wrestling and Boys Wrestling. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do take great pleasure in expressing the appreciation of the city commission and all citizens of the community on this unique achievement and hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through the 22nd, 2025, as Garden City High School Girls Wrestling Championship Week and call upon all citizens of the community to encourage our youth in their endeavors towards excellence in life. Signed and sealed the 15th day of April 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor. Would you want to say anything, Coach?
No worries.
Okay. We'll grab a quick picture here and get you guys back to class. Good? All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Do you have any friends that want to come up too and take one? Good, okay.
Thank you very much, Coach. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's exciting. Congratulations.
Sounds good. One, two?
Congratulations.
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 Thanks, Coach.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, it was a long time. Yeah, thank you.
I know. That's exciting. Thank you so much.
Congratulations on the award. That's great, Cole. Yeah, you all took your chances.
Congrats, guys.
Item 6C.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Alta Brown PTO to allow the mayor to proclaim May 2nd, 2025 as Julie Coprich Day.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I approve the proclamation as presented.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I will read this proclamation in an event later, or first part of May, I think, is when the event's scheduled, so I'll read it at that time.
We're ready for the report of the city manager. Mayor and Commissioners, congratulations to the Garden City Electric Department on receiving the American Public Power 2024 Safety Award of Excellence and Exceptional Electric Liability. And I think to tell you a little bit more about this, we got Mike.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The electric department superintendent, Billy Villanueva, attended the American Public Powers Association, which we refer to as APPA, their safety conference in Sacramento, California on March 29th, 2025, where he accepted the 2024 Safety Award of Excellence for the city of Garden City's electrical department. APPA comprises over 2,000 municipal electric systems across the United States, from the most significant public power utility in the United States, which is Los Angeles Water and Power, the largest utility in the United States, into any small community nationwide. More than 200 utilities entered the annual safety awards contest for 2024. The entrants were placed accordingly to their worker hours and ranked based upon the most incident-free records of the overall state of their safety programs and culture during 2024. Harnessing electricity to keep our communities powered is vital work that can be dangerous, even deadly, if the proper attention isn't paid to tried and true safety practices, said John Beasley, Chair of the APPA Safety Committee. This honor, this award honors utilities that hold fast to these practices and in doing so, put the safety of their personnel and their customers above everything else. In addition to receiving the safety award, the electric department was also recognized for achieving national recognitions for exceptional electric reliability in 2024. Electrical Department staff utilizes an APPA E-reliability tracker service that tracks power outages and restoration services, comparing Garden City to the national statistics that the U.S. Energy Information Administration tracks. Excuse me. Year after year, data consistently demonstrates public power utilities provide highly reliable service, said the APPA Director of Research and Development, Paul Zumo. The utilities recognized here are truly elite when it comes to keeping the lights on. Their community should be proud of their hard work and dedication of the local power provider as they earn this well-deserved recognition. So congratulations to the electric department receiving that. We didn't have them all show up, but we do have a picture of the whole crew in there. But I would like, if it's okay, Mayor, have Kent, Billy, and Kayle come forward and if you'd be willing to hand those in the plaque.
Sure.
Take a picture, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Hey, I think this is a copper one.
Can you get us all in?
Can I come in just a little bit?
Congrats.
Out of trouble?
Good job. Proud of you guys.
Thank you.
There you go.
Items 7B through 7F are staff reports. If there's any that you wish to ask questions about, would stand for questions?
Any questions? Okay, moving on.
Call your attention to the meetings of note. There's several on here. Those requiring RSVPs, we'd ask that you do those through the city clerk's office. I think now we're ready for item nine, the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2585-2025A.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2585-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. This item, Commissioner Langgraf will be stepping down.
Item 10A, the city commission is asked to consider and approve an extension to the sales tax exemption certificate for Sports of the World. If approved, it would be resolution number 3177-2025. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2018, the city commission entered into a development agreement with GC Investments, Inc., related to the Garden City Star Bond Project, commonly referred to as Sports of the World. In that agreement, it outlines that the developer may use industrial revenue bonds, or IRBs, financing in order to obtain an exemption from applicable retail sales tax on construction materials, equipment, and furnishing for portions of the project paid and reimbursed for star bond proceeds. In 2019, the city commission adopted the Resolution of Intent related to the IRB. However, that resolution had an expiration date. In 2022, an extension was granted that went through mid-2025. However, the project is still under construction, and as a result, there is a request to extend the sales tax exemption to account for the remainder of the project. The alternatives before you this afternoon are, one, the governing body may approve the resolution as written, or two, the governing body may not approve the resolution as written and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the first alternative and to approve the resolution as written, and there is no fiscal note and impact related to the city if you do move forward with this resolution. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Danielle?
So, so as far as extensions, is there no limit to the extensions we can offer, or is this just, they'd have to always come and just, there's what does come before the governing body?
So we, the, the technical piece that happens after you all approve a resolution is the city will work with the state of Kansas to issue a project exemption certificate, which is what allows them to have the tax-exempt construction materials. That's what is ending, and so we need to come back before all you, for you, for an extension related to that. So each of those do have a time duration. I would expect with where they are with this portion of the project, this should be the last time we're coming before you to request for that extension, but that's the, the impetus behind having to come back to you all for that resolution.
So with our approval, then it has to go to the state, is that correct? And then the state, have they been reluctant to approve any of these?
No, it's a technical process with the state. They've got to receive that project exemption certificate, and that's what they have to show when they go and purchase construction materials and that type of thing.
Great. No, I move that we approve resolution number 3177-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
I had discussion.
Okay. Come on up. Sorry. We kind of move fast here, so.
It's okay.
That's fine. Go ahead.
My name is Judy Nagley O'Grady, and I am not associated with the sports world. I just want you to know that.
Sure.
I have two questions that I am concerned about. I want to know how much of this star bond money is going to just plain administration fees? You know, people are employed other places, and this is like the frosting on the cake. I also think, is there a ceiling on how much tax money can be spent on this thing? Because that's my money. I live in Finney County. I also want to know is, who's going to pay the taxes when this thing is completed? Who is responsible for it? Yeah, how long are they tax exempt? So, anyway, those are my questions. I am concerned about it because I feel like we're a little bit out of control. Thank you.
I think I could address the three from Judy and the one from wherever it came from. So if I lose track of Judy, I may need your help. The first one, I had written down administration. There's a piece, and I believe this is the developer agreement, so if you forgive me and let me scroll through it, I think I can, well, no, it isn't the developer agreement. There is a defined piece that was part of the 2018, 2018 developer agreement that puts maximum amounts. There's two, there's two times the maximums on these star bond projects. There's a total maximum project that is, that is the part that tax money, whether it's the city, the unobligated portion of city sales tax, or the counties, or I'm sorry, the state's portion of sales tax, can go to supplement the overall cost of the project. So that's capped. Then within that, the developer agreement has capped each category, major category. And while there's some allowance for fluctuation between subline items of categories, the overall headings of categories have max, have firm maxes. So there, there is a kind of a land and, you know, ones for land, there is, there is a developer's fee and one. Those were realized upfront, I believe, and so the remaining ones now are purely construction. But once those are capped from how much, how much of your sales tax right now, when we all go shopping in the district, the unobligated portion of the city's sales tax and the state's portion of the sales tax that they're giving, it caps. And we're actually fairly close to the time when the bonds that were issued, I think it was 25.8 million, will be satisfied with, with the local, the local obligation, the local portion and the state's portion. That's different than the item that the commission is considering right now. This is a sales tax exemption for construction materials. We issue what's called industrial revenue bond. We pass industrial revenue bond resolutions and ordinances for many projects in the community. Not all of them follow through all the way with the other things that are offered for, through industrial revenue bonds. But they do it for the purpose of getting the sales tax exemption on construction materials. Fairly common development tool used, not just in Garden City and Finney County, but everywhere. And that will end when the construction ends. So, and it's maybe an answer to the question of, are there, are there limits? I think that was kind of your question, Commissioner Unruh. There's a time, the time limits there, just so somebody can't carry around an exemption certificate forever. And there's an accountability through the state of Kansas on that too. So, but there's, there's a mechanism on those that it's like, hey, these, you know, you know, do what you need to do within this time, or you got to come back and ask for it again. And so for various reasons, since 2018, this has been renewed once, but now it's run under the clock to be renewed again. And we anticipate that the construction side of this will be done by the, by the end of the year. That wasn't one of your questions, but I think it was one of Commissioners. Okay. Administration fee, what was the?
How much was spent on the sports complex, was that?
Yeah, so overall cost of the project is, is far greater than the 25.8 million and far greater than, I think, the 35 to 40 million originally proposed. But that's all out of, the balance of that and the, the extent to which the developer has put more money into that project is a private development decision. They've satisfied, they've satisfied the private investment in the development agreement piece. They're not prohibited from spending more on the project, they just can't spend less, right? So they've, they've satisfied that component of the development agreement. And as to the overall cost of the project that came out of the developer's pocket, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I do believe at some point in time, there'll probably be an update to the commission on what they've shared and what they plan to share. And while they're not obligated to do it, I think they, I think we can predict that they will.
Judy did ask about how after this is all completed, who's going to pay the taxes going forward?
Right, the property, it's a privately owned development, and that's the responsibility of the property owner. They've got it, just like I do on my house, or if I had a business, that they're responsible for dealing, dealing with the tax, the property tax implications. And if they're selling, you know, selling stuff on site, you know, in this case, it'd be like concessions and merchandise, they're responsible for having that sales tax relationship with, with the state of Kansas.
So, does that apply for?
Please come forward because the viewing public can't hear you if you're not talking into the mic.
Does that apply for a nonprofit foundation?
That's going to be between them and the Board of Tax Appeals. There's, I would say there's not a, there's not a, there's not a bright line. And a lot of times, it's up to the Board of Tax Appeals to determine the extent to which something is tax exempt and the extent to which it's not, and I wouldn't offer an opinion on, on that. One, not qualified, and two, I'd probably guess wrong. Even on a 50, even on a 50/50, yeah, yeah, I'd probably guess wrong.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I don't think I got all of them, though. I've got.
Yeah, did that satisfy?
I've got four dots. I only managed to write two words down, and I got two blank dots.
The last one, you kind of hit upon it, how long tax exempt? You, that was your last, how long tax exempt?
Yeah, and I think the exemption certificates last for three years maybe, but they also end when the project's completed. So that, this goes for anybody in this room, if they go get, if you get an IRB and get a sales tax exemption certificate, that certificate's no longer good to go when you no longer have construction materials to purchase for your project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think that's what this was specifically speaking about, was the construction materials. So is my understanding?
And a sales tax exemption from an IRB is. And a sales tax exemption from an IRB is only for the construction materials, it isn't, it doesn't alleviate you from any other tax responsibilities.
And, and only for this project?
Right, exactly.
Any other discussion or comments from the public on this? There was a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. We're pretty much close enough to 1:30. We'll, we'll go to 12A.
We'll get Commissioner Landgraf.
He's.
He advised he's stepping down for this one.
Yeah. Commissioner Landgraf will be stepping down on this item as well for 12A, which is a public hearing. Oh. Give me a.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, item 12A. This is a, the governing body, again, as in the previous two meetings, is asked to open the public hearing to amend the project plan for Sports of the World and adjourn it to May 6, 2025, at 1:30 PM at the City Administrative Center. Danielle?
I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. We're still working through everything that's needed to put that project plan together and actually bring forward a resolu, an ordinance for you all to consider. So hopefully at that May 6 meeting, we'll be able to have that before you, but we do need to adjourn the public hearing until that point in time.
I would, I would say some movement on this, though, different than the last two meetings. We have heard from, we've had some communication with the Department of Commerce and the, the pieces that you wait on them for so that the developer can finish their pieces, that then bring the project plan before you. There's movement, we've received communication on that. So we couldn't tell you that in the previous two meetings, but I think there's, we feel, we feel confident that May 6, we should be able to.
Have something from the state on this?
Well, and the developer, I mean, it's, really comes from the developer, doesn't come from the state, but the developer has to hear from the state on a couple of factors before they, they move forward. So, and we heard late last week from, from, from them.
Yep.
Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this during the public hearing? I'll adjourn the public hearing at this time, then, until May 6.
Commissioner Landgraf.
And then, yes, Commissioner Landgraf will be returning back to his seat at this time?
Do we have to make a motion?
Do we have to, no, I think.
Do we have to move to adjourn it?
I don't believe so.
I don't think we have in the past.
I think the chair can.
No.
You don't have to yet. Okay.
Ready for 10B?
10B.
All right, Mayor and Commissioners, 10B is the first of a few resolutions on nuisance abatements, just as we talked about in the workshop.
Right.
As we've done in previous meetings, we'll go through the background of the first one in some detail. We won't go through the background in the balance of those, because it's all the same with respect to process. The only thing that changes is the, the address and the nuisance itself. So I'll turn it over to Trent to do, or Alicia to do, item 10B, and if approved, it would be resolution 3178-2025, and abate conditions at 2003 North 7th. Alicia?
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 2003 North 7th Street has an environmental nuisance condition on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental codes. There's a couch located in the backyard. Staff has visited the property on many occasions. The property owner and the residents have been notified by two order of violations sent February 28 of 2025 and a certified order of violation on March 30 of 2025. The property owner and the residents were unable to be reached and no contact was attempted by the property owners according to section 38-137 of the Environmental Code of Ordinances, and have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the attached resolution or the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends the governing body approve the attached resolution, and for the fiscal note, the abatement costs incurred by the city shall be charged against the lots or parcels of ground on which the environmental nuisance is located.
Any questions for Alicia? None being, entertain a motion on resolution 3178-2025.
I move you approve resolution, resolution number 3178-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10C, if approved, would be resolution 3179 and abate conditions at 2104 North 3rd.
Anybody here for this item? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve resolution number 3179-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10D, if approved, would be resolution 3180-2025, and abate conditions at 519 North 13th.
Anyone here for this item? None being, entertain a motion on 3180-2025.
I move to approve resolution number 3180-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10E, if approved, would be resolution number 3181-2025, and if approved, abate conditions at 603 East Santa Fe.
Anyone here for this item? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve resolution number 3181-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10F, if approved, would be resolution number 3182-2025, and abate conditions at 707 West Fulton Street.
Anyone here for this item? Entertain a motion on 3182-2025, then.
I move you approve resolution number 3182-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may not have the screen in the room anymore.
Oh, there it is.
Look at that, thank you, Commissioner. Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Garden City Reuse Project Non-Federal, Non-Federal Match Contract with the Kansas Water Office, supporting the Garden City Water Reuse Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm covering for Fred on this particular item. Back in August of 2022, the Water Resource Manager Jones made a presentation to the Upper Arkansas River Advisory Committee, referred to as the RAC, describing the Garden City Water Reuse Project and asking that the RAC support funding for the project and the state water plan, which is developed by the Kansas Water Authority and administered by the Kansas Water Office. As a result of the presentation, the RAC submitted a letter of support to the Kansas Water Authority recommending 300,000 in funding for the project and the state water plan. Later that summer, the project was added to the, to the slated proposed projects in the state water plan, which was later funded by this, the Kansas Legislature. Excuse me. Later in 2022, the United States Congress designated 19.1 million in federal funding for Phase 1 of the Garden City Water Reuse Project through the congressionally directed or designated spending bill. The formal kickoff of the project began in April of 2023 with the congressional designated funding routed through the United States Environmental Protection Agency. And then from April of 2023 until October of 2024, preliminary engineering work related to the pre-awarded environmental assessment requirements of the project was completed. The completion of these pre-award tasks was required prior to the releasing of the federal funds. The governing body approved the Garden City Water Reuse Project Task Order Number 2 at the November 19, 2024 meeting. This task order, which is carried out by the city's engineer for the project, which is Burns &amp; McDonald, represents the field services and design for the Garden City Water Reuse Project. The cost of the task order is $1,755,200, and the city will be required to provide 438,000 in local matching funds, and the balance of the task of $1,316,400 will be funded by the EPA grant. Once this task order is completed, the project will move into construction. The estimated completion date of Phase 1 infrastructure for the Garden City Water Reuse Project is the fourth quarter of 2027. The Kansas Water Office contract represents, presented today for the consideration of the governing body, consideration of the governing body, provides reimbursement for the pre-award tasks that the city completed last fall and will provide another reimbursement when the Garden City Water reject, reuse project task order number 2 is completed. The city estimates the work for this project to be completed in October of 2025. If approved, the contract presented to the governing body from the Kansas Water Office will provide 300,000 in non-federal funding, non-federal matching support that will be applied to the city's $438,000 share of the grant administered by the EPA. And the two contracts were included in the memo and the rest of this information. Alternatives, one, the governing body may choose to approve the Garden City Reuse Project Non-Federal Match Kansas Water Office Contract, or alternative two, the governing body may choose not to approve the Garden City Reuse Project Non-Federal Match Kansas Water Office Contract. Staff recommends alternative one, approving the Garden City Reuse Project Non-Federal Match Kansas Water Office Contract, and if approved, the reimbursement proceeds from this agreement will be directed through the Water Reuse Utility Fund through the appropriate GL code. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Now I know why Fred wanted me to.
That's a lot, yeah. Now you know.
That's a good thing.
No, I mean, that's a, that's a great award, that, to be able to do that, and I think that's, shows the support from the state of Kansas for water projects, especially out here in Western Kansas, so.
So the construction will be complete October, you said, fourth quarter of 2027, so then the project itself then goes into, or it starts working then, or?
We start moving into Phase 2 at that time, the next phase of that project.
Okay.
The, the pipeline, inspection of that pipeline now is being inspected. I think they're going to start next week on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I move that we approve the Garden City Reuse, Reuse Project Non-Federal Match Kansas Water Office Contract.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Fred is in a water, the Kansas Water Authority office meeting this afternoon, so that's where he's at.
Great.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider a recommendation from the city attorney and special electric utility counsel related to findings of fact and conclusions with regard to the selection of a retail electric supplier for properties annexed pursuant to ordinance number 3006-2025.
Mayor and Commissioners, so before you today is actually a memo that talks about the recommended findings that you'll need to make in order to pursue this forward. I'm going to go over a couple important pieces of it with you today, and then you guys can move forward with your recommendations. This is in regards to four tracts of property that we're calling the annexed properties. The first is a tract located between K-156 and East Mary Street, which we call KSU Track A. The second is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of East Mary Street and North Farmland Road, which is KSU Track B. The third is located between K-156 and North Jenny Barker Road and to the west of Old Jenny Barker Road, which we call the Substation Track. The fourth is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of the section lines of sections 3, 4, 9, and 10 in Township 24, South Range 32, west of the 6th PM. And those are collectively your annexed properties. This annexation was effective on February 11 of 2025, and at the time of the annexation, three pieces, three of the tracts were actually being served by Wheatland Electric, but all four were in their service territory. KSA 661-17682 is where you'll find the factors that you all consider as part of choosing an electric service provider, and that is what you go through to determine each of the pieces that you have to find to determine who you're going to choose to be the electric provider at the end of this. On February 6, 2025, the city electric department provided notice to Wheatland of this annexation and asked Wheatland to notify city staff as to wish, whether or not they wish to apply for a franchise and be the electric service provider for these properties. Mr. McVeigh provided confirmation that they were not requesting a franchise agreement on that same day for the annexed properties. On March 18, the governing body received evidence from Mike Muirhead on each of the factors that you have to consider, and at that time, that was the only information that you received. On, and, and we expected that, right? Because Mr. McVeigh had already let us know that they weren't going to opt into it, so we didn't expect for them to present any evidence at that time. So then I just want to go through with you quickly, we do have a recommendation, but, but the factors generally, as they're laid out, is public convenience and necessity, rates of various suppliers, desires of the customers or customers to be served, economic impact on the suppliers, economic impact on the customers of the suppliers, the supplier's operational ability to serve the annexed area, avoiding the wasteful duplication of facilities, avoiding unnecessary encumbrances on the landscape, preventing the waste of materials and natural resources, proposals from any other retail electric supplier holding a certificate in the annexed area, and whether the selection is the public, is in the public interest as it relates to all the factors that you're considering. If you look under the recommended conclusions as we have provided them for you today, we are asking that the governing body conclude that the city utility department shall be the retail electric service provider for these annexed properties, that Wheatland Electric has been and will continue to be compensated for the termination of its retail service rights, according to state law. And then in regards to the factors under KSA 661-17682, that you would conclude as follows, that the city utility department is qualified to provide the retail electric service and the public convenience and necessity will be served by having a consistent retail electric supplier throughout the city limits. Such consistency will facilitate emergency response, safety, and customer service. B, electric load on the annexed properties will be served according to city utility department's standard rates. The 8.5% bare ground compensation as required by KSA 661-176 may be added to the utility bill for new customers. C, the owners of the annexed properties expect all services to be provided by the city, including electric service. D, the city will benefit from any revenue attributed to future load. Wheatland Electric will benefit from the 8.5% payment over the next 10 years. E, the city utility department's provision of electric service to the annexed properties will eventually lead to lower costs per customer for city residents and businesses once the initial capital costs are paid. Wheatland Electric's customers will benefit from the 8.5% payment over the next 10 years. F, the city is well positioned to serve the annexed properties with existing and nearby infrastructure. G, there is not expected to be any significant duplication of facilities as a result of the city utility department serving the annexed properties. H, there is not expected to be any significant encumbrance of the landscape as a result of the city utility department serving the annexed properties. I, there is not expected to be any significant waste of materials and natural resources as a result of the city utility department serving the annexed properties. J, Wheatland Electric did not submit a proposal. And K, continuity of the service by the city utility department within the city limits is expected to create a safer environment in the event of storm damage or physical damage to facilities. Police and fire officials will know that all facilities within the city limits are served by the city utility department, which may avoid confusion or unnecessary delays in mitigating dangerous conditions and restoring power. Given all of those considerations, we would ask that you adopt those recommendations today.
Any questions for Jennifer? Any questions for Jennifer? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we adopt the recommendations as presented by Jennifer Cunningham, city attorney.
Is there a second?
Can I get some clarification on that motion?
So the recommendations that she went through, the A through, A through I, wait, A through, was it J? A through K, sorry. So adopt the recommendations, A through K.
And shall be the, are you looking at alternative one?
Do we need to do alternative one also? That's what I wasn't sure of. Or just adopt the recommendations today?
By adopting the recommendations, you're selecting Garden City to be your public utility service provider, which is one.
Yeah, and I move that we conclude that Garden City Utility Department should be the retail electric service providers in the properties annexed pursuant to ordinance numbers 300, and that Wheatland's Electric has been and will continue. Nope, is that right?
I don't think that ordinance number's right. I think the ordinance number's 2975-2024. I don't know why it says 300 in the alternative.
I'm sorry, what was the ordinance number?
It's in the recommendation.
If I could, Matt, the actual ordinance is ordinance number 3006-2025.
That's what it says on our cover sheet, and that's what I wasn't sure of, so.
Mine says 300.
Yeah.
One more time, 3000 dash?
3006-2025 is what Mike said.
So let me amend my motion to make it much simpler. So I move that we adopt ordinance number 3006-2025 and accept all the recommendations.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the appointment of Sherri Nelson to the Public Utilities Advisory Board.
Yes, the mayor and commissioner, the city of Garden City owns and operates five public utilities, water, wastewater, electric, solid waste, and stormwater within and around the corporate city limits. The Public Utilities Advisory Board is a five-member advisory board that acts in an advisory capacity to the governing body on issues related to the operation, maintenance, and expansion of the five public utilities. There are currently two openings on the Public Utilities Advisory Board. The current members are Chris Law, who's the chair, Mary Eves is vice chair, and Raylene Dick as a member. Sherri Nelson applied to serve on the Public Utilities Advisory Board for a three-year term and has attended several public utilities advisory board meetings in the past as a guest. And as of this writing, no other applications have been received. If the governing body appoints Sherri Nelson for a three-year term, there will still be one vacancy on the PUAB and will continue to advertise for that. So your alternatives, the governing body may appoint Sherri Nelson to a three-year term on the PUAB, or you may choose to not make an appointment and do something at a later time. Staff doesn't have a recommendation, and there's no fiscal impact to making this appointment.
Any questions for Mike? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move we appoint Sherri Nelson to a three-year term on the PUAB.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve reappointing Police Chief Courtney Pruitt as the Garden City Law Enforcement Representative on the Community Corrections Adult Advisory Board for a two-year term from April 2025 to March 2027.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we appoint Police Chief Courtney Pruitt to the Community Corrections Adult Advisory Board for a two-year term, April 2025 to March 2027.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 12F is a review of the budget calendar for 2025 meetings and budget assumptions. Invite Finance Director Jared Coleman to come up and review that for you.
This is my last meeting, I got to stay here and not have to sit at the front.
There you go.
Despair I felt coming in. So I just wanted to cover what, I gave you a preview of the new binder for the year. First is the budget calendar, some key dates. We'll have our estimates from the county treasurer here on May 16. That's where we kind of plug in some of the figures. And then by June 15, we'll get the actual estimation from the county clerk on the property valuation. So those are the two kind of out of our control that we weighed on, the kind of final figures. But the next three commission meetings will start presenting budgets so that you can review them. And then the following few meetings after that will be the discussion meetings where we talk through kind of where we're at with the levy and what the needs are. The background information is similar to prior years. It talks through different funds. If you ever have questions about kind of what goes on in a fund or want to know the detail on it, I'd have to answer those. A couple things to point out on page two of the budget assumptions. We're estimating the personnel benefit costs where we're uptaking for the health, budgeted per person for health insurance. For 2025, it'll be $880, and for per contract for 2026, it'll be $900, so that's gone up the last couple years incrementally. And then the third page talks through the KAPR's, KPNF, Social Security and Medicare rates that are used. And those are just set outside of our control. We just use them. Then you have the goals document. This is the updated city commission goals for the year. The fourth tab has the CIP results. I included the adjusted scores that show the kind of prioritization that came out of the CIP, citizen-based committee. And then I have some asterisk stars on the left side. Those show if it was a city commission goal in the current year. And the two stars show if it was a goal from last year's city commission goals. So that way you can kind of see how those goals align with the CIP scoring that came out of that committee. Then you have all the different CIP projects and the breakout of them and the explanation. And then you also have the city's debt service schedule for the general fund debt service, well, not general fund, the debt service for our bond interest fund, the special obligation bonds, which is our TIF that the city has, and then our utilities, general obligation bond funds as well. And that's kind of it for the day. Happy to answer your questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jared? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12G is an executive session. We don't anticipate any action being required after that executive session. So if the commission would like to move on to the consent agenda and then the city commission reports, we can conclude the meeting, conclude the broadcast after we go into executive session. There's four items on the consent agenda, so unless you want to pull any of the items off and talk about them separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve Consent Agenda Items 13A through D.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 13A through D.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Going on to commission reports. Commissioner Landgraf.
So just want to state, there's a good pre-meeting talking about code enforcements prior to being able to kind of get some decisions thought through and even able to go through that. So it's good being able to have that. Also was able to attend the Kansas Housing Resources Corporations Regional Meeting here in Garden on April 2. Just want to say thank you to KHRC for putting it on and coming out to Garden City. Appreciate getting an update on all the different programs and also updated on the future of the programs as well. Also appreciate having, also appreciate them taking questions that the city had for them as well. And then also just want to wish everyone a happy Easter weekend and just wish you all safe travels while traveling.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, last week, I had the opportunity with Mayor Sessna to head to Washington DC. City staff and I met with Senator Moran and Senator Marshall. Kind of still in your thunder over here.
That's okay.
We also stopped by and met with Amtrak and while other parts of our staff met with Central Air Service. The key purpose of the DC trip was to strengthen our relationships with federal agencies and really share city updates and other important city issues with our senators. It was a really great opportunity also to meet with other communities, part of that delegation. And I really appreciate the time offered by our senators and also a night capital tour led by Senator Marshall. A big thank you to Micah Bunch for her incredible efforts to organize our trip. And this week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So a big thank you to our 911 telecommunicators. Last year, we did adopt a telecommunicator, if that's correct. Kind of sad that I didn't get to adopt one this year. And then congratulations to Girl Wrestling and then also the Just Serve City Award. And that's an incredible testament to our community's efforts to give when we are so able to receive. And then lastly, the APPA Safe to Excellence Award to Billy Villanueva and the Electric Department for their exceptional reliability. I think that is a huge testament to the dedication of the crew, the leadership of Superintendent Villanueva and our director, Mike Muirhead. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enru.
Yeah, I also want to say just congratulations to Electric Department. I mean, those three awards really speak to all that you do for us. And I think sometimes, you know, our lights are always on, everything always works, and so, not that we take you for granted, but sometimes it's good when there's a power outage that we remember, oh yeah, they're very important. But we really appreciate the work you do. And I tell you, safety, as far as for the workers and also for the community, that is really at the utmost. I do want to say thank you for those who attended and had and made public comment. You know, that's the best way to really, for us as commissioners, for you to come and actually attend the meetings and to say things, especially things that are important. And really, the questions that you have, other people have also. And so I just want to say thank you to the residents who attended today and just were able to make public comment or ask questions about some things that are important to them. That's the way we really know and can gauge the public's, where they're really wanting to understand. Also, the Community Cultural Day, if you've never been, it's a lot of fun. Be careful and pace yourself as far as eating. So I would go, I would go and eat your favorites first because by the time you get around, there's nothing, I mean, you're, some of the portion sizes are huge. But so it was, it's a really great, just a great week, a great day on that Saturday, and just seeing everybody and how excited they are to present some of their different dishes and also the things about the countries. It was, it's really a great event. I also, the city cleanup, I know it's coming to an end, and the city crews, I mean, they kind of rumble in and they rumble out, and you know, and it's, they've done a really excellent job. And a lot of people have just stopped and said how grateful they are that we as a city still do that. And so I know that there is a makeup day as far as if you call, I think it's this Friday, is that correct? Tyler?
It's over.
It's over, oh, sorry, no makeup day, sorry, yeah. Yeah, we do have a fall cleanup. And the last thing I want to say is I know this is a resurrection weekend, and so really just, hopefully you're attending the local church and just enjoying just an opportunity to spend some time with family. And with that, just be safe this weekend. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just kind of echo what all the other commissioners noted. Congratulations to our girls 6A state team, the boys team, wrestling team. We're runners-up this year, so congratulations to them. Want to congratulate all of our other students that are in competitions, not only during the fall season but during this winter and then this spring season. They're doing a really good job for all of our students, not only in sports but other activities that we have at Garden City High School. Kind of stealing back the thunder a little bit from Vice Mayor Nguyen, did go up to Washington DC. We always have a trip every year. It's kind of a collaboration between communities, Garden City, Dodge City, Liberal, Hays, and Great Bend. Really, it gives us an opportunity to go and visit with our representatives in Washington DC. I visited with Jerry Moran and was on that, part of that delegation. And then Representative Mann. That was about a nine-minute kind of elevator speech. He was right in the middle of voting that day, but very attentive, listening to our thoughts on the things that we have, that we're working on locally that do have kind of an impact from the federal level to our level here locally. So again, a great event where we go up and visit with them. They do come to our neck of the woods and visit, but it's always nice to get up there and visit with them when they're in session and present our needs and concerns and just thank them for their representation of not only the state of Kansas but our local concerns as well. Just wanted to wrap everything up before we do go into executive session. I know the other commissioners have mentioned it, but it is Holy Week this week and Easter this weekend. So please just have safe travels to any of events this weekend. On that note, we will, do we need to take a break before we go into executive session? Then we'll go to item 12G. How long, who do we need to have in the executive session and for how long?
Myself, Mike Muirhead, and City Attorney Cunningham. 15 minutes.
15? I move we enter into executive session pursuant to KSA 54319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property with city manager Matt Allen, Mike Muirhead, and Councilor Jennifer Cunningham for 15 minutes, beginning at 2:05.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. We'll start at 2:05.